Are you ready? Good evening. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 1046 PL 1975 C 231 S 1 amended 2006 C 70 S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park press and the New Coaster on January 4th, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 4th, 2019. Our mission statement, "Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse evolving global society." Mr. Hastings, roll com, please.
Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo, Ms. Jones, Mr. Lotaraca, Ms. Lozinski, Mr. Pinkney, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Etienne, Ms. Abes Anderson.
Please stand for questions.
Our pledge to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, domination under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start with the report of committee chairs. I'd like to start with Mr. Lotaraca, please, Chairman Lotaraca, for the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Finance Committee met, we discussed issues relating to budget planning for next year, so we'll begin to report more specifically as we look at gearing up for next year. And Joe Grillo has been willing to look at what would be our next town hall meeting and gonna get that date, kind of a mutual date for that, which I think will be another discussion about financial situation of the district as well as student academic achievement and other issues. The energy services company interviews, the company selected has been Energy Systems Group. They were, they scored the highest among the group that did the interviewing. And is that an issue on the agenda, or does that just?
Yes, the appointment of Energy Systems is on the agenda for approval this evening.
Okay, so you'll see that, you'll see that tonight on the agenda. See if you have any questions with regard to that. Point number three, there was an error in the information that was distributed about our per cost, our cost per pupil, reducing the number published of over 42,000 down to over 36,000. Again, as an aside, that includes all funds to the district, which in a way seems to punish those districts that have substantial grant funding, that are doing a tremendous amount of additional support for students such as Asbury. And, but that's what gets distributed and the state says, well, that's how they do it, and they do it the same for everybody, but there was a significant error that's been corrected. Doing a comprehensive maintenance plan, which is another one of those state requirements to just have, it really won't affect, in my understanding, looking at issues relating to facilities as we move forward and what we might do, but it's a requirement that we have this plan in place and show a particular cost per square footage. We also had a demographic study done. Again, be aware, and you can see, under this study, the population of the city has decreased slightly from 2010, 2017. It is a study limited to the confines of Asbury Park, so I think as we move forward, we have to keep in mind, our strategic approach will be not only to draw students from Asbury Park who may now be attending other institutions, but I think we have put programs in place whereby we can be drawing students outside of Asbury Park, primarily at the high school level, to be coming to our district. But, so in that sense, the study is somewhat limited in just saying, these are the demographic issues this individual found in doing the study, and the study is available if board members would like to go through it. I don't think it's all that voluminous, correct? It can, so you can contact Mr. Hastings and look at that. And then just a few other comments. You can see, we've contacted an architect to update our long range facility plan, another requirement. We have to remove underground storage tanks from the maintenance shop property, and there was a discussion that the most recent charter school did not receive permission from the Neptune Zoning Board to relocate to the former church with an attached school in Neptune. So that charter school is still operating in Asbury Park. I assume at both church locations, they're on grand, and they're currently appealing the zoning board decision to the Superior Court. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Lotaraca. Are there any questions? Ms. Breach, Chairperson of Athletics.
Good evening. We have our meeting Monday, pretty much just getting ready for homecoming. The one important thing, mark it down in your calendar, October 4th. It's the home game that we're going to dedicate, officially dedicate the plaque for Mr. Bruno. We anticipate 5:30 PM, that's the time the family's going to arrive, so extended invitation to board member staff, and you know, it's kind of like a, we put it off twice before because of the weather, so it's gonna be rain or shine this time. Everyone knows what homecoming is. We're working on the floats, hopefully getting the convertibles again to make things a little bit easier for our board members and staff to ride it instead of a backup truck. We still have a lot of things to work out. I just met today with one of the lead persons from the class of 1969. She provided me a yearbook and some pictures of the reunion, so we're going to focus on the 50th graduating class for this year with our photographs. Again, VIP tent, it's pretty much, it's homecoming, so that's what you're gonna hear from us, and then we're gonna disseminate all the information down as we solidify it, but it's definitely the 18th. Okay, just wanted to see if you had any questions? Yep.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Mr. Hastings, would you report out for buildings and grounds, please?
The committee met this past Wednesday, the 18th. On the agenda, you'll see, there is a use of facility request with a fee waiver for St. Stephen Church for an upcoming event in October, I believe. They're asking for a waiver of fees. The committee discussed it, and in keeping with some past practice, they were willing, the committee's recommendation was to waive the room fee, but not the custodial fee, but as you'll see it on the agenda, the agenda's written that they waived the entire fee, so we can amend that as the board pleases. The high school HVAC system continue to have some issues with the auditorium unit. Train was onsite today, and they'll be onsite again tomorrow. They've discovered a piping issue that's inhibiting the flow of oil through the unit, so they're rerouting the piping to resolve that issue. We did speak with some of the users of our facilities for the fall about the various policies that are in place that they must adhere to, so we reminded them of those. And also, administration is looking at a proposal in keeping with our push on the performing arts to update the sound and projection systems at the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Ms. Lozinski?
I have a question, Mr. Hastings, in regard to the facilities use. The problem that we have recently has come back, that we had in the past years with the football games and the cooking on the fields, and an incident happened two weeks ago. My concern is when they have, we have these large events at our fields, I know we have first aid there and police there. I guess the concern that, you know, I have and other people may have is especially with the football teams that are there, is is there a way that we can, when we look at these special events, to have them, require them, have first aid or somebody there in case something happens to them?
Yeah, my suggestion would be that the policy committee take a look at that and see whether or not it is appropriate or preferred that for sporting events, that either private EMS service be required to be on standby, you know, at or near the field, or some other arrangement be made, whether it's just the hiring of an EMT to be at the game, but I don't think it's a bad idea to require it in view of the type of activity that's going on for that particular use.
Like, literally, we're talking about six or seven games during the whole course of the day, and there's a lot of, a lot of people there, in the stands, a lot of students playing on the field. I mean, most of the other events that we have there, we have somebody there. I mean, it's not our requirement, but I think just for safety and just the public perception that maybe, except we talked about, that maybe we should do some type of amendment to it or contact them?
Yeah, I would certainly leave that to the policy committee. You know, I know that there would be concerns with regard to costs, you know, there are nonprofit groups that are using it, and they have limited funds, et cetera, but certainly there may be a way to ensure that there are, you know, rapid response times and/or someone available who's trained and certified. And certainly, it could be a requirement if the policy committee feels and the board feels that it's appropriate to do so.
The one thing I want to mention is, it already is included in the facilities use, they know the concussion protocol and policy of the school district. I don't know if there's any opportunity to know that they have completed the course because it's online, a lot of that stuff they do here for the coaches, and I didn't know if these organizations have, I don't know much about the sports organizations, if it's required by their parent organization to have something, somebody on staff. You would think with football, there may be some sort of requirement. I don't, I don't know for a fact, because I never checked into it.
Yeah, with regard to the concussion protocols and things like that, those are school district policies for school events and school teams. With regard to outside teams and outside sports organizations, the governing body of the respective group may have a requirement or a protocol, but my concern, quite frankly, would be that we are exercising some sort of control over the organization, and what we are doing is literally allowing the group the use of our facility. And so the line gets blurred where there is responsibility once we start kind of getting into the weeds with the organizations.
It's just out of concern for the children.
Absolutely.
I understand what you're saying.
Absolutely, and I understand what you're saying, and certainly I want all of our children and visitors to be in as safe an environment as possible.
Are there any other questions?
So what are we doing on that issue? Okay, so it'll go to policy, and you'll come back with some, thank you.
Okay. So it's your next policy committee meeting, and then you'll report out in October's meeting?
Sure, yeah, we'll address it. I'll have a note right now about it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Ms. Lozinski?
You'll see on your agenda, there's some second readings and some new readings. There's a Strauss ESME Alert mandated policies changes. They're all, I don't know if there's, there was one that had to be reviewed by personnel, I mean, HR, I don't know if that's, was that reviewed and put on here? There were some choices to be made, but the other ones are just phrases and words and rewording of the mandated policies.
No, there were three regulations, I believe, related to policy that required recommendations on fitness for duty and some of those other health-related issues that the Personnel, HR department is reviewing for us.
I did want to bring to your attention the first reading. There's a new parent organization policy that we're having a first reading on, so if you take a look at that, there's been some additions to it, and we decided to adopt them. Also, media relations, although we did update our own policy, there was a Strauss ESME Alert on that, and Adam took a look at it, and I guess there were some melding, looked here and there, but ours was mainly right on target, so there's just minor changes to it. So there's a first reading on that again.
Just so the board is aware, the policy change recommended by Strauss ESME to Policy 9400, which is media relations, is born out of a case that I'm actively litigating in Monmouth County Superior Court, and it's because of that case that that policy has changed. I went ahead and spoke with Ms. Lozinski a month or two ago, in view of what was going on in that litigation, I kind of gave the heads up that we should probably rework our policy here, which we did do here, but since then, Strauss in Policy Alert 218 released a revised version of Policy 9400, which again is really, we were already protected, but if you want to go ahead and adopt this revision by Strauss, no problem at all.
Did you, did you see this revision?
I'm familiar with the revision, yes.
So we kind of adopted, it's almost identical?
It's almost identical to what we've had before.
One additional thing, the student representative to the board, the bylaw, the suggestion from the committee is to have an alternate chosen from the student council, which would mean if the representative that's chosen isn't available, they pick an alternate to come to sit with us, which, you know, give another student an opportunity to see what's going on in the board. So that's on for a first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Lozinski. And now, Mr. Ruiz, for our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. If you would report out on curriculum, please.
Thank you. Yes, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on this Friday, the 20th. I'm just gonna go over some highlights from the, from our meeting. We're in items number 11 to 29. Item number 11, the YMCA Youth Development Program is providing college readiness training for our Dream Academy students, so that's to help some of our students with, you know, with any challenges, excuse me, go right down, okay, any challenges that they have with studying, gives them a lot of great tools for studying and being able to manage a college course load. It also helps to fill a gap, I think, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, Debbie, helps to fill a gap because of the way the schedule is between the high school and Brookdale when they go to classes, so whenever they're off there, when they come to us, this helps to fill that gap for them. Item number 14, we have a collaboration with Dan Saint J to support our performing arts initiatives, which we are implementing at the middle school, okay? Item number 16, the implementing of the LEED, the Law Enforcement Against Drugs program in the fifth grade. This is formerly known as DARE. I think we used to do this in the fifth grade, so now they've changed the name, but it's pretty similar, it's about, you know, drug prevention. Number 17, just a correction on item number 18 from the August agenda, we had billed the, we put the activities and actually the team leader at $1,500 when it actually should have read $2,500, but the district's commitment is still $1,500 from that board agenda, so that hasn't changed, it's just the amount that we reported was wrong, so we wanted to make that correction in the board minutes. Number 19, WAGL is a new program that we're bringing in. It's a data-rich advanced intervention program, it's kind of, I coined that phrase a little bit, that will round out our offerings and push our students beyond grade level. Right now, intervention programs are set up to bring our kids up to grade level, and this program would allow us not only to do intervention for students below, but also to push them ahead. It has a component that allows us to, let's say, a sixth grader to do seventh grade, eighth grade work, something we haven't been able to offer our kids before because we weren't in a place where we could do that. We're in a place now where we can offer our students some more advanced work, which is what our students need, so that we can start to show those performance gains that we anticipate having. Item number 20 is called the ILA Conference. That is the International Literacy Association Conference, that's gonna take place on October very shortly, and we're, it's a great professional development opportunity, but even more importantly, we have two teachers who were invited to attend, and with all expenses paid for them to attend this conference, so they'll be attending and presenting, actually. So we're very excited about highlighting those two teachers at the high school, and so this is gonna be a very exciting opportunity for them coming up in October. Number 25 and 26, one is the Optical Academy, which provides free exams for eyeglasses at third grade, and Attend a Smiles for Kids, which, as you know, is kind of like the, we used to have the dental bus come around, so it's the same thing, so it just gives, you know, gives our students and our families free opportunity for dental care and eye care. Okay, if you have any questions about any items on the agenda, please let me know. Yes.
The WAGL program, is that for literacy? Is that what it is?
Literacy and mathematics.
And math?
Yes.
And I have a question about number 16?
Yep.
The pilot for the relationship curriculum? Whose curriculum is that? There's no...
That is a curriculum that we put together. We did it last year, we actually started the pilot of it last year with second grade at Barack Obama, and the curriculum basically talks about being friends and forming relationships with our students. We wanted to continue the curriculum for those same students going into third grade, and then bring in the new second grade cohort into that relationship curriculum that we started.
The other question...
The second year that we're doing it, by the way.
The other question I had is, what does LEA mean, the conference?
No, we wrote that wrong, it should be ILA, IL, the International Literacy Association.
And I noticed there was an account number in there, I was a little confused about. 585 is board travel account, it's not the administrative account. Is that a mistake? One of the line items.
Yeah, not sure. I don't know how to answer that one, I'm sorry. Jeffrey?
580, that I saw that was different, I just thought it might be a typo, that's what his question was.
That account number is on there in error.
Okay, thank you.
In addition, that should read ILA.
ILA.
Not LEA, so number 20. If you would be so kind as to make the correction, ILA.
Okay.
It stands for International Literacy Association.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Oh, Madam President, I did have one question. I was noticing through the agenda today with the curriculum. Now, it may be that I just forgot, and I may, you know, you correct me if I forgot. I know we had some, quite a few curriculums written, but did we approve all of them? Like, have they been on the agenda since the curriculums were written? I know, I'm trying to, if somebody could go back and just check, because I'm not recalling some of it, and it's just me, but it could be that we just overlooked having the board approve them.
I think we are up to date with that because Les Richardson's checked when he was in, oh, I'm gonna say in...
The first day of school.
The first day of school, and we seem to be up to date, but we'll double check it. I'm pretty sure we're up to date with it, but...
Because I know we had a lot, because we have the new freshman class, so we have like, an additional class that's now coming in, so we have an additional upper class curriculum, so I was just, it was just going through my mind.
We can check that.
Any other questions? Thank you. Public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167. So if you have a comment or a question, concern, please come to the podium. You have three minutes. State your name, first and last, and your address, please, and thank you.
Hello, sir? I'm sorry, so, uh... What's up? Hello? You're gonna warm up, right? Okay. I need to warm up too. Hello, hello? Oh, great. I'm just happy to have my voice back, so. I haven't had it for about six months. Ernest McNolley, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I've lived here since August, bought a home here, August of 2007. I've had probably combined about a 50 or 60-year career in education of a recently retired graduate education professor. I've taught school superintendents, principals from all over the state and in New York, special ed teachers, gifted and talented, administration, and probably importantly today, statistical analysis, like school report cards and state budgets and things like that. So which one are we talking about now? It's kind of a long introduction, but we're talking about an item, this isn't the public participation. I thought that starts at 7 o'clock.
Thank you, we have a 6 o'clock meeting, there's time for you to speak at that time, and then it's 7.
So you get to speak twice?
Yes.
Isn't that great?
Mm-hmm.
I miss, I miss, I miss this kind of work, so. So then we're on the agenda, at what item? I got a, I got a minute and 40 seconds.
Right, this is your time to state your concern, or if you have a question.
Oh, it doesn't have to be about anything in particular?
No.
It could be about anything? You serious? Okay, I'm concerned about, sure. Certainly, I'm in favor of the, I know you're not gonna like this, but the school closings. Certainly, I'm in favor of the downsizing of the school district. I think the future is that we're gonna run out of students. I think we have way too many buildings, I think we have way too much staff, I think we have way too little performance, I think there's a lot of waste and budget analysis that could be done. I think that the way the school is equipped and set up, I think it's what we call old school. I think there are more efficient methods and new technology and better shared services between communities and et cetera. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I read somewhere that we're in Asbury now up around $42,000 a student, I think that's a state high. I know that due to refunding, the city has lost a lot of its funding, and it's tragic. However, let's not forget that the person running the system in Trenton is actually a former superintendent, so perhaps, perhaps the, is it the school chancellor? Is that what we say in New Jersey? No. What, Dr. Ripple is what?
A commissioner.
Commissioner, okay. Done, thank you. I'll put you in a introduction.
Madam President? I might want to mention that Mr. McNolley was not here for the Finance Committee's report about the mistake in the cost per pupil that the state made. He may want to hear the funding, actual funding number.
Mr. Lotaraca, you're the Chairperson of Finance. Would you be kind enough just to go over that portion?
Certainly, I'll just go back over my initial report for anyone who wasn't here. District Administration has worked, the state monitor, the county superintendent, and the Department of Education regarding the data that was collected for the 2018 overall college.
We've, for the past three years, offered these extra positions...
Right.
...in response to, when you talked about our demographic study, just making sure that we have an opportunity to do our part in spreading information about the great innovative programs the board has supported the school district in implementing.
Right. No, I think it's great to be doing that, and I just wanted to confirm that we have some detail to the tasks they would be doing in light of the fact they're doing these other jobs as well.
Yes.
But you're saying we have that.
So if I may, for an example, on some of the Saturdays, there are, as you know, this is a wonderfully energetic and vibrant city, and on some of the Saturdays, they have a lot of events. Sometimes we have Oyster Fest, sometimes we have other Chamber of Commerce events, tabling opportunities exist, and we always like to make sure we have a presence. Oftentimes, our bilingual district parent involved specialist, Miss Sonia Erezari, who's here tonight, will volunteer her time, but in addition, we have other staff members that do come out, because they can be very long days to spread the great word of what we're doing at Asbury Park Schools. Any items on B9?
I just had a question about 9 and 10. They weren't attached to the agenda, but because of the timelines that are involved here, you know, I'm not going to, I'd like to see the items attached when we have to approve different submissions to the NJ DOE, if we could, please.
Okay, items, any items on B10? B11?
I just had a question. What does MC3 stand for?
It's the Monmouth County Consortium for Directors and Supervisors of Curriculum and Instruction.
Okay, thank you.
It's facilitated primarily by our Executive County Superintendent, Dr. Lester Richardson, and members from the Executive County Superintendent's Office.
Thank you.
Any items on B, any additional items on B11? And as it relates to the question about the SSDS, our director, Debbie Sylvia, will be doing a presentation on that, so you'll have the information. Okay? That will be a part of the 7:00 PM presentation.
No other questions?
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Be happy to take any questions on items C1, number 1 through C6, number 14. I'd like to point out on page C2, various donations from the Monmouth County Young Democrats, the Asbury Park Toy Drive, Canned Aid, and Ms. Patricia Luzinski on behalf of Cone Resnick. And I would also point out on C3, number 6, that reflects the use of facilities that we discussed earlier in the Buildings and Grounds Committee report.
Any questions?
Madam President?
Yes.
So we're going to amend that, number 6? Because you said, with the exception of custodial fees?
The recommendation from the Buildings and Grounds Committee was that we waive the room fee and ask for the custodial fee. It's up to the board to decide how they'd like to address that.
We'll have to do that during the regular public meeting, though, correct?
Right.
Okay. Can we separate that when we get to your agenda, Mr. Hastings? Madam President, can we separate that?
Yes, we may. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I would, if I may?
Yes, Madam Superintendent.
I just would like to make a correction on C2D. That item will be coming, will need to be removed.
It's being removed?
Yes.
Okay.
However, I would like to make a comment about it.
All right.
Very delighted that we have Dr. Sandra Munuskin here, Vice Principal of Bradley Elementary School. She's had some conversations, and she had a member from the community reach out to her, an organization, a nonprofit organization from the community, reach out to her with regard to interest in our students in the Asbury Park School District. And so through that conversation and through articulation between myself, Dr. Munuskin, connecting me with this Canned Aid organization, we learned that there is this large conference, if you will, of bicycles that happened in the city of Asbury Park. Because there's a connection of one of the nonprofit organizers, they reached out and they said, "We'd love to provide families in the school district with bikes." And so we're delighted that Canned Aid will be donating directly to our families, and therefore, this is why item C2, Resolution Item D is coming off. It's not a donation to the school district, but it is a donation to our families, for which we are so delighted, that they want to have that presence in the city.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Sure. Okay. We'll reconvene for the 7:00 o'clock meeting in about six minutes.
Good evening. In accordance with the provision of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 1046 PL 1975, C231 S1, amended 2006, C70 S2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press and the New Coast Store on January 4th, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 4th, 2019. Our mission statement, "The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society." Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Ms. Breach?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Lotaraka?
Here.
Ms. Luzinski?
Here.
Mr. Pinkney?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Ms. Atien?
Ms. Abas Anderson?
Here. I would like to take the time to introduce you to our new student member. Her name is Sanai Koven. And would you like to tell them a little bit about her?
My name is Sanai Koven. I'm a freshman at Asbury Park High School. I'm currently in a Dream Academy program, so that means I'll be graduating with an associate's degree by my senior year. I'm actually pretty nervous, but I'm actually pretty happy. Yeah. I'm pretty happy to be here. I plan on studying political science and criminal justice.
So this is our student. You will see her on a monthly basis. We're very pleased to have her, and so welcome to you. Thank you. Flag salute, please. Stand.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic, which stands for one nation, united, without borders, with equal rights and freedoms.
Madam Superintendent? You have presentations.
Good afternoon. Yes, good afternoon, Board, members of the public. Tonight, we will have two presentations that will be conducted by our Director of School Counseling, Debbie Sylvia. The first one is with regard to our grades on, as it relates to HIB, which stands for harassment, intimidation, and bullying.
Good evening. I'm doing these presentations on behalf of Dr. Howard, who is in charge of the HIB and our SSDS reports. So these are reports that have to be submitted twice a year, and I believe the first one was already submitted during the school year, and this is the end-of-the-year reports that cover July until June 30th. So when we talk about HIB, there's a self-assessment that each school district has to do, each school in the district has to do, to assess how they're doing with, following the regulations. And these are the scores for each of the individual schools across eight core elements. And the ones that are scored the lowest, if you look at Bradley, it's a little bit lower than the rest of them, and they're mostly in the area of, let's see, actually, it's not that lower, in Core Element 1, which is HIB programs, approaches, or other initiatives. So all of the HIB specialists at the elementary schools and at the middle school and at the high school are all attending a training to, you know, help them understand the laws better and the regulations and how to better conduct HIB investigations. So that's a proactive step that Dr. Howard took with the department to make sure that we continue to see these scores rise. Our average score for the district is a 70, and if you look statistically at our data, we continue to go up. Back in 2015, '06 and '15, '16, we were below 60. So we were at 59, around 59%. So we have seen growth in these self-assessments, and hopefully with the ongoing training, we'll continue to see that go in an upward swing. We had 34 reports that were investigated, and 17 of those reports were confirmed as HIB. So we're about 50%. We still struggle a little bit with, you know, students recognizing whether or not they are in an HIB claim. So a lot of kids, sometimes if they get into a fight or they get into an argument with their friends, they might say, "Oh, they're bullying me." It has to be very specific guidelines for it to classify as an HIB, and a lot of times they are just, you know, disagreements or maybe things that fall under code of conduct, but are not necessarily against the protected class, and that's the difference. It has to be against the protected class for it to count as an HIB. These are some improvements that Dr. Howard is developing for the program to increase parent and community awareness, again, so that parents in the community understand the difference between an HIB and the difference between a conflict, and monthly meetings to develop and maintain positive school climate. We do have a school climate committee in the buildings, and we also have specifically to HIB, a committee that meets twice a year in each of the buildings to talk about the trends that they see and where they can improve the school climate. These are anti-bullying specialists. We have, you know, one for each building. And that's the conclusion of the HIB presentation.
I do. Is there an average statewide score, or like, what do other schools in the state have in terms of their...
I'm not sure of the data, and I don't want to give an incorrect estimate, so I can get the information for you and get it back to you again, because this is really Dr. Howard's report, so I don't have that information handy, but I'm sure there is probably an average, and we can get it for you.
I'd like to see that, just to see where we rank with other schools.
Right. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to transition to the SSD report. This is the Student Safety Data System that we use that tracks all of our conduct. And this is the report for the 1819 period, too, the second half of the year. So you can see the totals for each of our schools. We had 33 incidents and 78 that qualified as other incidents. An incident is an incident of violence, vandalism, weapons offenses, or substance offenses, and the other are any incidents that lead to student removal from the regular school setting, and that could include OSS or ISS, so perhaps a fight. And then if you look at the 1718 for the same period, it's kind of hard to see them not side by side. So if you look, those numbers might seem a little bit high, but then if you compare them to where we were in 1718, you'll see for the high school that we are on a downward trend on those incidents. So although you look, if you just look at that number in isolation, it may seem high, but in relative to what we've been seeing, it's actually been going down. So we're, especially in the other category where we have the OSS and the ISS incidents, we're down 34 other incidents, just at the high school alone. And if you look at the middle school, that's the largest decrease. You see in the other category, we're down 80 incidents. So that's, we want to continue to see that. That's remarkable, from 95 to 15 incidents in the course of one year. And then in the regular incidents, we're down nine. Same thing for Bradley. In the other incidents, you can see that large drop from 42 to 35. We're down 35 to seven. Barack Obama. You can see that all of our schools are seeing declines across the board. This is the incident report from '16, '17, '17, '18, and '18, '19, so a three-year comparison, and as you can see, we do continue to go down.
Good evening. I'm doing these presentations on behalf of Dr. Howard, who is in charge of the HIB and our SSSD reports. So these are reports that have to be submitted twice a year, and I believe the first one was already submitted during the school year, and this is the end-of-the-year reports that cover July until June 30th. So when we talk about HIB, there's a self-assessment that each school district has to do, each school in the district has to do, to assess how they're doing with following the regulations. And these are the scores for each of the individual schools across eight core elements. And the ones that are scored the lowest, if you look at Bradley, is a little bit lower than the rest of them, and they're mostly in the area of, let's see, actually, it's not that lower, and Core Element One, which is HIB programs, approaches, or other initiatives. So all of the HIB specialists at the elementary schools and at the middle school and at the high school are all attending a training to, you know, help them understand the laws better and the regulations and how to better conduct HIB investigations. So that's a proactive step that Dr. Howard took with the department to make sure that we continue to see these scores rise. Our average score for the district is a 70, and if you look statistically at our data, we continue to go up. Back in 2015, '16, we were below 60. So we were at 59, around 59%. So we have seen growth in these self-assessments, and hopefully with the ongoing training, we'll continue to see that go in an upward swing. We had 34 reports that were investigated, and 17 of those reports were confirmed as HIB, so we're about 50%. We still struggle a little bit with, you know, students recognizing whether or not they are in an HIB claim. So a lot of kids, sometimes if they get into a fight or they get into an argument with their friends, they might say, "Oh, they're bullying me." It has to be very specific guidelines for it to classify as an HIB, and a lot of times they are just, you know, disagreements or maybe things that fall under code of conduct, but are not necessarily against the protected class, and that's the difference. It has to be against the protected class for it to count as an HIB. These are some improvements that Dr. Howard is developing for the program to increase parent and community awareness, again, so that parents in the community understand the difference between an HIB and the difference between a conflict, and monthly meetings to develop and maintain positive school climate. We do have a school climate committee in the buildings, and we also have specifically to HIB, a committee that meets twice a year in each of the buildings to talk about the trends that they see and where they can improve the school climate. These are anti-bullying specialists. We have, you know, one for each building. And that's the conclusion of the HIB presentation.
I do. Is there an average statewide score, or like what do other schools in the state have in terms of their?
I'm not sure of the data, and I don't want to give an incorrect estimate, so I can get the information for you and get it back to you again, because this is really Dr. Howard's report, so I don't have that information handy, but I'm sure there is probably an average, and we can get it for you.
I'd like to see that, just to see where we rank with other schools.
Right. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to transition to the SSD report. This is the Student Safety Data System that we use that tracks all of our conduct. And this is the report for the 1819 period, too, the second half of the year. So you can see the totals for each of our schools. We had 33 incidents and 78 that qualified as other incidents. An incident is an incident of violence, vandalism, weapons offenses, or substance offenses, and the other are any incidents that lead to student removal from the regular school setting, and that could include OSS or ISS, so perhaps a fight. And then if you look at the 1718 for the same period, it's kind of hard to see them not side by side, so if you look, those numbers might seem a little bit high, but then if you compare them to where we were in 1718, you'll see for the high school that we are on a downward trend on those incidents. So although you look, if you just look at that number in isolation, it may seem high, but in relative to what we've been seeing, it's actually been going down. So we're, especially in the other category where we have the OSS and the ISS incidents, we're down 34 other incidents, just at the high school alone. And if you look at the middle school, that's the largest decrease. You see in the other category, we're down 80 incidents. So that's, we want to continue to see that. That's remarkable, from 95 to 15 incidents in the course of one year. And then in the regular incidents, we're down nine. Same thing for Bradley. In the other incidents, you can see that large drop from 42 to 35. We're down 35 to seven. Barack Obama. You can see that all of our schools are seeing declines across the board. This is the incident report from 1617, 1718, and 1819, so a three-year comparison, and as you can see, we do continue to go down. So the conclusion that we can draw from this are the programs that we're bringing into the district to support students in the classrooms are working. So all of the social-emotional things, the yoga comm, the restorative circles, all of those things that we're doing, the deep breathing exercises, the mindfulness, all of those things are having an impact on our students, and we're seeing that reflected in the discipline. So that concludes that report. Any questions on that one?
So I know we haven't changed. I know we haven't changed. Some people have left within the district. Are those programs, they're still continuing for this year, so we'll continue to see another drop?
Yeah, we're still, we still have all of those programs in the district.
So you think there's anything else besides those programs that have led to this decrease? Or you think that's the main?
I think some of it initially was our reporting as well, because maybe we were not classifying things in the right category, so we might have seen a drop in the numbers from some of that as well.
Thank you.
So thank you so much, Ms. Sylvia, for presenting information that's not directly related to your office, but you still kind of touch in that area as a school counselor. If I may, I just wanted to touch on Ms. Breach. Your question is a very timely one, and I appreciate that question, because I want to, I want to go on record as saying, as Ms. Sylvia stated, there's a lot of reasons for the decline, but I want to be very clear that we are experiencing a decline in all of our schools. We have wonderfully innovative practices and programs in place that support teaching and educating and supporting the whole child. So we have wonderful social and emotional programs. But when we put systems in place to monitor and make sure that we are accounting for our data and the inputting system, that has a lot to do with it as well. So this is not the result of just one specific thing, and so I don't want anyone to feel like, well, you know, there's changes in terms of who may be present. Present, it's a myriad of factors. The culture at the high school is one where our students and our families are thriving. They enjoy being there, and our teachers' instructional practice has a lot to do with the decrease in discipline, because what we continue to message out to the staff and the school community at large is that instruction and discipline are not two separate ideas. We are educating the whole child, and so discipline and instruction work hand in hand. So it's all of those things in its totality that have led to that decrease. And although Dr. Howard is not here, I give her and her team kudos, but I also give kudos to the entire executive committee and all teachers and administrators and everyone in between. It is definitely a collective effort of our entire student population. Which brings me, if I may, Madam President, to the next item on the agenda. And so when we think about a decrease in school discipline, oftentimes we may not necessarily connect that to the role of a secretary. We might think of it as more so security. Very rarely does anyone connected to custodial engineers, but I'm delighted tonight that one of the presentations that I'll be giving is the Golden Bucket Award. Golden Bucket Award was started by the previous superintendent as a way to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of our custodial engineers. When students come into a space and a place that's clean, where there has been a lot of thought put into how students are entering a building, how parents walk and approach a building, how the community sees a building, it says a lot about not just the outside and the aesthetics, it says a lot about what's going on inside. If the school looks dirty and unkempt on the outside, one's inclination is that there may not be anything worthwhile happening inside. And so I'm delighted that under Mr. Sosa's leadership, we have a group of custodial engineers that we're going to recognize tonight for their work all last year in ensuring that our facilities were safe, were orderly, and were well-maintained. And we don't take that lightly in the Asbury Park School District, because it sends a very clear message that we are about business and that we are about the business of ensuring that our children, our families, and our communities have the very best. So without further ado, I'm going to ask all of the Board members if they would join me as we recognize our custodial engineers. Mr. Sosa, if you would come, so we can make the acknowledgement for the winning team from school year 1819 for the Golden Bucket Award. In the absence of our Buildings and Grounds Chair, I'm going to ask Madam President if you would stand side by side with Mr. Sosa and I. We leveled up. You know, we have a system in place, but we are next level Asbury Park School District. And so in so doing, next level in my mind equaled an actual golden bucket. So we have an actual golden bucket that's going to hang in the winning school. Mr. Sosa, can you just give a little background?
Quite honestly, the group that's here has come a long way. They are fantastic. They've done a lot to show not only the public, also the teachers and the students that are there, that when they come into the building, there's pride being given, not just in little things that you see, in a lot of the things that you don't see. We see it, we recognize it, we appreciate it, we thank you. In that spirit, Thurgood Marshall is the winner of last year's Golden Bucket. We have some members.
Give him a round of applause. Go Thurgood Marshall. Our head custodial engineer, Mr. Tron Goldfarb, could not be with us tonight, but I'm so delighted that the members from the team at Thurgood Marshall are here. Also, I want to thank our district bilingual parent involvement specialist for reaching out. We have wonderful city partners and through the Chamber of Commerce, through different businesses and organizations, and they were so excited and delighted and wanted to share in our joy in terms of celebrating you and provided us with some donated gift cards. So we want to thank you so much, and I'm going to call you up one by one. As I mentioned, Tron Goldfarb is not here. We have Mike Eskridge. Leon Hughes. He walked in right on cue. Leon Hughes, come on down. Right. Everyone gets to take a picture with the bucket, but if Ms. Jackson Byers doesn't get her bucket tomorrow, you know it's going to be a problem, so nobody gets to sleep home with it. Well, we can designate one person to take it home and sleep with. You guys can pass it around. Thank you, Mr. Hughes, for your commitment and dedication to our students.
Anthony Rosario. Nice work, guys.
Thank you. Thank you again, gentlemen. We really appreciate all that you do, especially in an elementary school. We know it's not easy to keep an elementary school clean. Thank you so much. It's not easy to keep the little ones, you know, keep the rooms tidy.
Yep. I just wanted to, Mr. Rosario, Anthony reminded me that, just so everybody's counting, this is third time for the same school. Good job, guys. Good job. Great job.
Third time for the same school, but not necessarily the same team. So I only say that to say that, I only say that to say that, you know, it's evident that all of our custodial engineers take so much pride every day in the work that they do, and we really appreciate you. Moving on to the next presentation. It gives me great pleasure to have this moment. Oh, Board members, I'm sorry. I should have told you, just keep standing, instead of like in church, get up, stand. It gives me great pleasure to take this time to acknowledge our retirees. We were not able to recognize them in June of last year, and I'm so thankful that some of them have been, were able to come out tonight to be recipients of this acknowledgement. We had 13 individuals that retired last night, I mean, last year, at different times, but I'm going to, I'm going to read all of the names for everyone, and then the individuals that are here will please come forward, okay? Akia Mohammed, she's not able to be with us tonight. Fabrice Cuadrado. Jeanette Mowen. John Kosteki. Oh, I'm sorry. I meant to read the numbers of years of service. 28 years of service for John Kosteki. Jeanette Mowen, 15 years of service. Fabrice Cuadrado, 18 years of service. Akia Mohammed, 23 years of service. Michael McLeod, 39 years of service. I believe, is Michael here? No, okay. Louis Griffin, 26 years of service. Come on down, Lou Griffin. More affectionately known as Lou Griffin. Come on down, we have something for you. You can just stand up longer and be in the photo longer. Veronica Patterson, 27 years of service. Our guy who's holding it down for us at the central office and district-wide, Mr. Benjamin Evans, pastor, Reverend, 21 years of service. Come on down. Let the people look at you for a while. Don't let Lou Griffin stop you. Jacqueline Tillman, 35 years of service. I know she's not going to have a problem coming down now. Ms. Deidra Towns-Johnson, 37 years of service, and my former administrative executive assistant. That's right, give the royal wave. Kathleen Clausy, 17 years of service. Greg Roper, 12 years of service. And Alex Jangoo, 15 years of service. I'll say that the most senior individual standing here tonight is Ms. D, affectionately Ms. Deidra Towns-Johnson, more affectionately known as Ms. D, at 37 years of service. We appreciate all that you've done on behalf of our students, their parents, our families, and our community, and the staff at large. We really appreciate your dedication and commitment. Your story is such a wonderful story of how you've just transitioned and progressed throughout the district, and coming out tonight means a lot to me personally. It's great to see you. And to all of our recipients, Mr. Evans, you know, first time I started here, we connected as well, you and Ms. D kind of brought me through. So thank you so much to all of our retirees tonight, and on behalf of the Board of Education, I'm sure Ms. Abes Anderson would like to have a word or two?
Well, we're just very appreciative of your years of service, and we just wanted to thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have a photo op. Yeah, we're all going to squeeze in. And at different levels, everyone here has impacted all of the executive committee, so I want to ask the team if you come join in a picture with us. Especially you, Ms. Buford. Pass it to you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Just moving forward with our agenda, I have the Superintendent's report. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. My report is very brief. I want to just acknowledge that we have completed. First of all, we had a fantastic opening to our school year, for which I was very delighted and pleased to see many of our parents and children just smiling and excited about the opening of the school year. As I mentioned, our buildings were all in pristine condition, just lovely, ready to receive children. Our staff seemed to be very energized and invigorated. I want to thank the Board for always supporting what may sometimes seem like an out-there idea, but knowing that I have your support means a lot in terms of the impact that it has on our school readiness. Yesterday was the completion of three back-to-school nights that were very well-attended at all levels. We typically see a drop-off at the high school because, and that's not just an Asbury Park thing, that's national, and it has a lot to do with the fact that because students are older, parents feel like they don't necessarily need to be as involved. But the culture and the programs at the high school are very interesting, very exciting, and our parents are very interested in seeing, learning, and being more involved. I want to thank one of the members from my executive team, is Ivy Brown, who was actually present that night for the high school back-to-school night and observed and witnessed an increase not only at the high school back-to-school night, but also at the middle school and all three elementary schools, an increase in our parent participation. I'd like to thank our district bilingual parent involvement specialist, Sonia Erisari, as well as John Burnick, who were very thoughtful in presenting Title I information and making sure that our parents understand all of the protocols and the expectations for the students. Debbie Sylvia's office as school counselor also is doing a phenomenal job in her outreach efforts, and to date, she has visited one charter school, and we have four more visitations for our charter and non-public schools where our district is a part of a presentation. Sometimes we present in isolation, where they just invite us in, and we share the innovative programs and the recruitment efforts that we have underway for our schools. So I want to thank Debbie Sylvia and the guidance team for making a presence in one school, and they will be visiting in the upcoming weeks, and I'll be sharing this with the Board in a communication, other schools in the area, so that students and parents have options, just like if they were applying to a private school or a college, we go in school and do open houses. So thank you so much to your team for being very diligent and making sure the message of the great work and the great and innovative programs that we have in the district are being shared. That completes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. And now, public participation. And now, public participation in accordance with-
Madam President, can I just mention something?
Yes.
Just to piggyback off the superintendent, I just wanted to mention about the girls' JV volleyball team who, uh, made history on Monday, playing, uh, the first-ever Asbury Park School District JV volley, girls volleyball game home against Manasquan, and, um, I just think it was fantastic that, uh, we now have, uh, a girls volleyball team, and it made, made history by doing this. And with the addition of a soccer team at the high school, you know, I just think that's phenomenal.
Can I just add something real quick? They won their first two games, so they, they, they swept. And I also want to thank, oh, Mr. Sosa, he left, but they did a phenomenal job at the middle school, setting everything up. It looked, and the new mats, it looked just great. I was just really impressed. And the crowd, the amount of students that came from the high school to watch this team play, it was unbelievable. It was unbelievable.
Many thanks for sharing. The success of our athletic team, and we thank you as board members for your leadership and oversight in ensuring that we had a robust, uh, fall sports program and that it was an equitable experience for our children. So thank you.
Thank you. And now it's time for public participation in accordance with board policy zero-
Madam President?
I, I-
Now listen here. I know, I know.
Okay, get with the program.
There's something that, that, that's, that's, you know, I, I, I wanted to ask this, um, Madam Superintendent about, because, um, I received something in the mail, and it seemed like it was contrary to what we've been saying, and I just wanted clarification because I felt like, I know it's the silly season and campaigns are starting and everything, but, um, I got something in the mail that seemed to me like it was outright bogus, uh, saying that the schools have no evening, uh, no, no evening programs and no academic summer programs. And apparently, from what I hear, this went out to everybody. So I just wanted to, to ask, is this true, or is this, what, what is the truth on this? Because I think it's important that, that residents and, uh, families know what's what.
As I shared in the very beginning, um, I really appreciate and am delighted to have a wonderfully supportive board. Lot of the decrease in the discipline rate that our, we just saw a pre, or just had a presentation on, I mentioned, is directly tied to those innovative programs that you continue to support as a board. And those innovative programs include an after-school program for our students that are pre-K to eight, where they remain with us until a quarter to six P.M., and they are provided with a snack and dinner. Um, that program will begin October first. In addition, we continue the tradition of an academic summer program that, uh, is twenty days for our students pre-K to eight and slightly longer for our students in high school. And so I appreciate that the board continues to support those innovative programs that we're able to provide for all of our students. We have a rich, robust high school summer program as well, and that affords our students an additional opportunity to make up credits, take any, uh, makeup classes or anything of that nature, nature. So thank you again to the board for continuing to ensure that all of our students have what they need. Some of our students need more, and you are committed to making that happen.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Now, it's taking my time with this. Public participation in accordance with board policy zero-one-six-seven. You have three minutes. Please come to the podium. First and last name. State your comment. Nothing to say? Okay, I'm going to close it.
Good evening. Ernest McHoly, 4000 Lake Drive, Asbury Park. Uh, it's a little uncomfortable to come meeting after meeting and be one of the few speakers. Uh, I think that, um, any school system that, uh, seems challenged by data and statistics needs to bring the, uh, community in, homeowners, taxpayers, et cetera. Uh, although I listen in these meetings of the congratulatory nature, uh, I find that in looking at state school report cards, performance, uh, indicators, et cetera, that we are in fact in Asbury Park with one of the lowest-performing districts and school systems in the state, uh, not counting the fact that we're probably the second-most dangerous place in the state of, of, and I know everybody says, no, that's not true, but remember, New Jersey uses FBI reporting system, current data, year to year. They pro, they pro, pro-rata, I mean, per capita, look at five-hundred-sixty-five municipalities. Here we go. Uh, thank you, Mr. Turney, for helping me lose my train of thought, okay? I don't think I would do that to you on a presentation.
I'm sorry, sir, what did I do?
You just helped me lose my train of thought.
Oh, I, I, if I could help you get back to your train of thought, I certainly would, but I apologize if you lost your train of thought.
But anyway, so as I was saying, um, uh, it, it, it really doesn't matter what's said here, what matters is the data. School systems in, in New Jersey go by data and statistics and records, et cetera. It's nice to come and make statements and self-congratulatory things, but the data indicates tremendously opposite for Asbury Park. Public opinion is that no one, there are a lot of communities nearby Asbury that are actually sending districts to Asbury. No one accepts that. They're willing to pay to go to a wall school, to go anywhere except here. With thirty seconds left, I'll mention that over the past few months, I've reported incidents on school grounds. There are, uh, liquor and beer and smoking parties at the Bangs Avenue School, two, three, four hundred people. There was the incident I reported at the high school with the police and firemen, uh, drinking and playing, uh, baseball, and nothing came of that. There was the incident at the transportation center where they had liquor in there and there's kids, and all these involve kids on school grounds. And, uh, finally, because of my reporting, I was the victim of, you may have seen in the paper.
Thank you.
Public participation, it is now closed. State monitors report, please.
I have no report.
Thank you. Acceptance of minutes?
Madam President?
Yes.
Could I have a motion for all items A1, number ten, A through E?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Lizinski, second by Mr. Grillo.
Do you have a question?
I, I have a correction. I believe on August twenty-first, the special meeting, was that the training with Ms. Weinkoff?
No, the twenty-first, I believe, was the town hall.
Any other questions?
Okay. Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Say you want to-
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
And Ms. Albes Anderson?
Yes.
Madam Superintendent?
Could I, before we go to the superintendent's agenda, on A2, we have items eleven and twelve, could I have a motion for those two items?
Need a motion, please.
Ms. Breach and Ms. Lizinski? This is A2, eleven and twelve. Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Ms. Albes Anderson?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Madam Superintendent, would you like to ask for a consent agenda?
Thank you, I would. Before I do that, I would just like to go on record and say that, uh, we have a fantastic security team. I mentioned some of our ancillary staff prior to the awarding of the Golden Bucket Award, but I would like to, uh, go on record now and just say, I'm very pleased with the leadership of our school security direct, under our director, Louis Jordan, and our entire security team. Uh, we've seen not only a decrease in incidences, uh, around discipline, but we have a wonderful footprint and presence as it relates to ensuring that our students have a safe and orderly school environment. Um, I just want to be clear that our schools are safe and that our enrollment continues to increase, particularly at the high school, which is why we have this push in terms of making sure we're going out and we're visible in other school districts and other schools where parents have found our district to be a, and a wonderful option for their children. That being said, I would like to ask for the board to, uh, accept a consent agenda for items on B1 to B11.
Move. Second. Question? Mr. Hastings?
All items B1 through B11, Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Uh, yes, on everything except B6, Q, abstaining.
I'm sorry, B6.
Yes.
Q, you're abstaining. Thank you. Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Except B4L and B76, abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Ms. Albes Anderson?
Yes.
All motions carry.
Mr. Hastings, whenever you're ready, would you like to ask for a consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, prior to presenting the agenda, I'd like to note that C2, five D has been deleted from our agenda, so we will not be voting on that. And we are separating out C3, number six. So this is C1, number one, through C6, number fourteen, with, uh, without C3, number six. Could I have a motion for those items, please?
Move. Sorry.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Grillo?
Uh, yes, on everything, abstain on C2, five, eight.
Thank you. Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Ms. Albes Anderson?
Yes.
All motion, all items carry. And could I have a motion for C3, number six?
Move. I need a second. Second. Question?
Can we make an adjustment to that, to, uh, just charge for the custodial fees and waive the, was it the fist, the room fee, correct? Yeah, as, uh, recommended by the B and G, uh, committee.
Board is in agreement, that's the motion we can correct.
I'll make a, I'll make an amendment to my, I moved it, right?
Yes.
I'll amend my, uh, the resolution to reflect that change.
Thank you. And a second, Mr. Grillo? Okay, Mr. Lattaraca?
Any questions?
So the motion is C3, number six, we're waiving the room fee only. Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Ms. Albes Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. That completes my agenda.
Need a motion to adjourn? Move. Second. Okay. You have some all in there? Huh? You have something to say? I have the largest, I'm-
Do you have something to say?
I'm thinking about-
Me too.
Okay, Ms. Breach does have something to say.
Please.
Turn your mic off, Ms. Breach. We're waiting, come on.
No, I'm good. I just, I just, the question was, no executive session, that was it. I guess we don't need anything.
Oh, no.
So the motion is closed. From Ms. Lizinski, second by- Grillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Our thank you all. All right. Thank you very much.